It's time.
I was scared.
Welcome to the May 3, 2018 Business Meeting. And I'll go to our County Administrator, Don Krupp.
Good morning Commissioners. We have Mr. Steven Madcor here, County Counsel, and Mary Rathke serving as your Clerk to the Board this morning. I'll start with a roll with Commissioner Humberson.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Chair Bernard.
Here. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, it's both a sad day and a great day. Our tax assessor, property assessor, Bob Borman will be retiring. He has a replacement that we're excited, and he's thrilled to have the opportunity to give her his old job, I guess. And it's a lot to reach the level, a lot, big shoes to fill. Bob, I've known him quite a while, out on the road explaining people's tax bills. And people, it's kind of like going to the car shop and getting your car repaired. It's something that you have to pay for, but you're not always excited about. So today is a great day. And I'm going to turn it over to our County Administrator to introduce.
So, thank you. And of course, the official description of this item on your agenda is a board order appointing a Clackamas County Assessor. And, you know, effective as of Monday of this week was technically the very last day for this very dapper and gentlemanly Mr. Bob Borman to step down as our Clackamas County Assessor, a position that he has served with both honor and distinction for some 11 years. And when a vacancy like this occurs during the course of a term, the Board is required under state law to appoint a replacement County Assessor who then serves and holds the office until a successor is chosen by the next appropriate opportunity for general election, in this case, the election on November 6, 2018. And Mr. Borman has recommended that his second-in-command, Tammy Little, who has been serving as the Assessment and Taxation Manager, is the individual for the Board to appoint to serve in this capacity. Tammy, of course, has been working in the Clackamas County Assessor's office for more than 34 years, and she's served in her current capacity since September of 2007. She does possess the necessary qualifications required by Oregon law to serve as the County Assessor. So we did discuss this at a regular work session on April 17. At such time, the Board of Commissioners unanimously approved Mr. Roman's recommendation to appoint Ms. Little as the County Assessor. And so we have brought it forward to you as a board order this morning, and we also have planned following board action, an opportunity for Ms. Little to be officially sworn in. And I'm assuming there'll be a photo op opportunity following that. So I respectfully recommend that you approve the board order appointing Tammy Little as County Assessor effective May 3, 2018, and continuing until a duly-elected person is sworn in as County Assessor in January 2019.
So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. Do we, we do not have a board order number. Can we have one first?
Yes, it's going to be Board Order 2018-30.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt Board Order Number 2018-30, appointing a Clackamas County Assessor.
Maybe her name.
And it would be Tammy Little.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve a board order Number 2018-30, appointing Tammy Little as Clackamas County Assessor. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? It's unanimous. Congratulations. And with that, we will proceed to swearing in.
Yes, and I understand too that Ms. Little may have a few remarks to share with you. Maybe they should follow the official swearing in.
Okay.
Come on up.
I, Tammy Little.
I, Tammy Little.
Having been duly appointed.
Having been duly appointed.
To the office of Clackamas County Assessor.
To office of Clackamas County Assessor.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
I will faithfully and honestly.
I will faithfully and honestly.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of Clackamas County Assessor to the best of my ability.
Of Clackamas County Assessor to the best of my ability.
Thank you. You're very. I can't be honored of being the first to introduce you to the Honorable Tammy Little, Clackamas County Assessor. Thank you.
Tammy.
Thank you. I'd just like to take this opportunity to say thank you. I am very grateful and honored that by Bob Roman's recommendation of me for this position, I think very highly of him and have a great deal of respect for him. I also appreciate Don Krupp and the Commissioners for your confidence in making this appointment. So thank you all very much. I'm also grateful for all the opportunities I've had through the years. I've worked with, I've been privileged to work with great people in our department and throughout the county. And I look forward, I really love my work in the Assessor's office, and so I look forward to this new challenge and the opportunity to grow and learn more. And Bob is a very tough act to follow, but I will strive to do my best. And I just want to say that I intend to continue his good work to ensure the citizens and the taxing districts of Clackamas County that they can have confidence in our property tax system and receive high-quality customer service. I look forward to working with everyone, and I'm excited. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
So I would just like to say one thing, unless you've got some things you want to share as well, but I just, I want to say, express thank you to Bob for all of his work and effort and commitment to the county. I have learned an awful lot about the Oregon property tax system, which is trying to explain it is about trying, same as trying to explain quantum physics. And Bob has made it as understandable and legible as it possibly can be made. He's been a great partner here for me to be able to work with here in Clackamas County. So I wanted to make sure I said that today.
Yeah, if you give Bob a $20 bill, he'll cut it up and show you how those tax dollars are spent. So never give him anything over a one. Any additional comments? Well, with that, we'll take a photo.
Commissioner Humberson, can you go a little back? And Commissioner, too. Great. That's good. One, two, three. And one more. One, two, three. Got it. Thank you.
Just so all of you don't have to feel like you have to hang around. You're welcome.
And don't be afraid.
Thank you.
You live to regret it.
Well, that tells us why he was so successful. The woman behind the man.
Oh, it's going to be hard. Yeah, you need for that.
So first, we're going to have our other elected official, Sherry Hall, up to tell us a little bit about what's happening in the current election. Thank you.
Ballots were mailed out last week, and so our first returns were coming in on Monday. And we were thinking, wow, is anybody voting? Usually, we would bring back about 30 trays of ballots from the post office, and we brought out about two trays. And the next day, nine ballots. And so we're thinking, this is really slow. So we compared our number to the 2016, which was a presidential primary. And today, on the '16 election, it was 7%. And we're at 5% now. So it's not too much different. Hopefully, they'll start coming in heavy. If anybody didn't get a ballot, they should call our office right away, and we can take care of getting the ballot to them if they are an eligible voter. Our number, the number of ballots we have in as of yesterday is 11,362. We think we picked up about 3,000 today. And we are updating this returns every day on our website. So you could get into the Clackamas County website, go to Elections, and then go to the May 15 election. And at the top of the page, there's Ballot Returns. Click on that, and you'll see every day what the ballot returns are, and it's getting posted between 4:00 and 4:30. The last day to mail a ballot would be one week from today. That's next Thursday, May 10. After that, make sure that you get it to a drop site or to the Elections Office by 8:00 on the 15th. So that's all I have to say. Does anybody have any questions?
Well, Paul may have a question or a comment.
Yeah, well, first of all, I want to encourage everyone to vote, everyone out there that's watching, of course. But my question, I did go to that, that part of the website about the reelection results or returns.
Right.
Percentage. It'd be nice if there was a comparator in there to know how we're doing, like maybe what was in 2016 or 2014.
Two previous years.
Yeah. Just so people have an idea, or we have an idea, if it's high or low, or something to gauge it by, as a, something to compare to.
Okay, so we can probably do that. I'll take that idea back, and we'll get it up. And so the last two primaries, so '16 and '14.
Yeah, that'd be, yeah, I think might be a good indicator, one being a gubernatorial, the other one being a presidential election.
Okay. Okay. We'll do that.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
One of the, not a question of you, but I was wondering, have we ever had a woman as the Assessor?
I'm not aware that we have.
I don't think so. I don't think so. This is history.
So that might be something to look at.
Oneita Orr.
Oh. Oh, yeah, I remember that.
And then she became clerk.
Oh, okay. All right, so.
And she was also one of the first six women in the Oregon Legislature back in the '50s.
Wow.
Thank you, Sherry, for your, for your history. That's great.
Thank you, Mary, for coming today. Tell us your name and where you're from. You don't have to give a specific address.
My name is Mary Zellhary, and I live in Milwaukee. It's a hard name to pronounce or know about, but that's what it is. So, okay, so I'm here as a member of the MACG Clackamas Housing Team. My friend Ellen Burns, who's also a member of the team, told me that she saw you on Monday, and thank you for your support. So my words today might be a little redundant, but few of us turn away from somebody telling them thanks. So if you don't mind, I'll continue. Thanks for your work at reducing the houseless problem in the Clackamas County. Thanks for your support of the most vulnerable citizens in our county, the houseless. Thanks for your support and encouragement of the MACG Clackamas Housing Team and our efforts to provide safe overnight shelter for the houseless. As we met with each of you during the last year, you were appreciative and supportive of our efforts. Three of you were able to attend our open house last Saturday. In addition to thanking each of you, we would like to also thank Andrew Yaden, Ellen Rogalyn, and others in planning and zoning, and of course, Vahid Brown and Erica Silver, Abby Ahern, Mary Jo Cartesanaga.
Cartesania.
Cartesania.
It's a hard one to pronounce.
It's a hard one. Emily Klepper, Mike McAllister, Garrett Teague and his video guys, and many more. My husband and I are thankful that we live in Clackamas County, where the officials and the employees are so dedicated to making the county a good place for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Paul.
I just want to just thank MACG and your organization, your continued advocacy. And, you know, when you first approached me two or three years ago, and I just want to take this opportunity to share that one of, one of the issues you brought, or ideas we brought forward, was permitting these overnight camping things on some of the faith-based facilities. And we've talked in detail about this, but I just wanted to just share that idea and thank you, you know, my gratitude for everything you're doing. We're not going to be able, as government, to solve this problem alone, and we really appreciate. That was a great presentation on, on Saturday. Was happy to attend. But we do need to work in partnership with you all, and I'm hoping that we can, that's part of our planning efforts, is to be, have some kind of a planning or permitting of that, so you can make perhaps some investments for some basic facilities, you know, whether that's bathroom, whatever that may be, shower facilities and so on. But do know that if you house those people or accommodate that, there'll be some requirements that you'll have to make, investments.
Right.
And I want to make sure that it's not a stranded investment. And so we'll find a way to help you.
Thank you very much.
Ken.
A little bit of reiterating what Commissioner Savis said, I just want to say personally thank you for the work that you do and your fellow volunteers do, because quite frankly, we could not do it all ourselves. There simply isn't the resources available to do it. And without the citizen volunteers, there'd be a lot more people out there that do not have any place to sleep except in the cold. So thank you again for all that you do, and we look forward to continuing to work with you.
Thanks.
Martha.
Also, we all have to say something today because we love, because we love you guys. And it's part of our larger strategy to partner with folks like you across this county in order to build the capacity we need, because as my colleagues have said, we can't do it alone. And one of the issues that we've had for years in this county is actually a lack of nonprofit groups. You know, Multnomah County has a larger capacity for that, Washington County, and you folks have really stepped up to the plate to build that capacity here in Clackamas County. So thank you, and without you, we wouldn't be here, so.
I'd just like to add that I appreciate your efforts also, and had I not left my home phone at work, I would have known there was a meeting on Saturday, and I would have attended, because I went maybe to one of the first or second ones.
Yes, you did, you did go to the first one. That was at Milwaukee Lutheran two years ago.
Yeah, and, and I know the county's working really hard, but we also went to five, so that we would have an opportunity to go to more meetings. I was actually out working on the barn, but when I realized I had missed it. But appreciate the work you're doing, and we got a long way to go and a lot of work ahead of us, but I think in the end, well, I don't know if we'll ever solve the problem, but we can certainly make an effort to do our best. And we, we could not do it without volunteer organizations. I can assure you, we had a meeting the other day, H3S, where there were, I, we, we went to, we have 50 volunteer groups, but H3S, there were 81 people on these committees doing research on these very, in these various areas. We couldn't do it at all without your help, so thank you very much. Thank you. I think that's it. All right. Oh, Ken.
There was a comment made, and I think this might be the appropriate time for it. There was a comment made by the Minister from Eugene.
Yes.
And her congregation is only about 35 or 40 people.
Yes.
They're helping eight people. And one of the things that she said that I thought was the most telling remark was that, "We can't help everybody, but we're helping eight people." And I think that that's really what we have to look at. We can't necessarily do it all, but we're going to help some people. So.
That's great.
I thought her remark was perfectly timed.
Right.
Great, thank you. Well, that's last citizen communication. We're on to the reading and adoption of a previously approved land use ordinance.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to invite Mr. Nate Boderman up to the dais. This is a consideration of adopting ZDO 266, Amendments to the Special Use Exceptions and Development Standards Provision of the Comprehensive Plan and the Zoning and Development Ordinance. Mr. Boderman.
Thank you. Good morning Commissioners. The item we have for you this morning is the adoption of an ordinance which would implement the previously approved ZDO 266 land use decision, which relates to amendments to the county's comprehensive plan and the zoning and development ordinance involving special uses, exceptions, and development standards. The Planning Commission met on this and had a hearing on February 26 of this year and voted 5-0 with two abstentions to formally approve staff's proposal to this board. The Board of County Commissioners held a public hearing on March 21, and by a vote of 3-0, orally approved ZDO 266 as recommended by staff, but at the direction of the board, amended the staff's proposal to eliminate a setback exemption for mechanical units such as air conditioner condensers and other similar mechanical units that was proposed for ZDO, section 903. So staff has drafted the ordinance before you today to reflect the board's decision that was made on March 21. Staff has also made a few housekeeping amendments to standardize formatting and update citations as is customary with these types of proposals. So it's certainly our recommendation that you adopt the materials that have been placed before you, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
No, sir.
I appreciate the efforts of this committee in cleaning up our ordinances and bringing them up to date. I think we still have another year or so worth of work to do. What was originally a five-year plan has taken a lot longer, but it's not because we haven't been working at it, it's because of, should I say it?
Don't say it.
Marijuana.
Yep.
All right, well, with that, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we read ZDO-266 by title only.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we read ZDO 266 by title only. Any discussion?
I just want to give some appreciation to staff for all the hard work. I, I think it'd be optimistic to say we can finish this project in one year, but, you know, on every road, there's a pothole, so it's, there's been a delay.
At least you're not getting into the weeds.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, I don't want to get in the weeds, but we'll, we'll leave it there.
We did get into the weed, though.
And not get us out of the.
Yes. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? I'll ask the Clerk to read ZDO 266 by title.
Okay, ordinance number ZDO 266, and ordinance amending chapters 4, 6, 10, and 11 of the Clackamas County Comprehensive Plan and sections 102, 106, 202, 315, 316, 317, 401, 406, 407, 510, 511, 512, 513, 601, 602, 604, 707, 817, 822, 827, 903, 904, 1001, 1002, 1005, 1006, 1007, 1009, 1011, 1012, 1013, 1015, 1016, 1017, 1018, 1102, 1105, 1107, 1203, 1205, and 1307 of the Clackamas County Zoning and Development Ordinance and repealing sections 802, 820, 831, 838, 901, 902, 1008, 1014, and 1019 of the ZDO.
Thank you. I would expect the motion to repeat back those numbers.
By memory.
Now, so I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt ZDO-266 amendments to the special use exceptions and development standards provision of the comprehensive plan and the zoning and development ordinance as previously approved at the March 21, 2018 land use hearing.
Second.
The problem with reading all those numbers again is that I'd have to repeat it when I read the motion. It's been moved in second that we adopt ZDO 266, amendments to special use exemptions and development standard provision for the comprehensive plan and zoning and development ordinance as previously approved at the March 21, 2018 meeting. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just one thing I'd like our attorney to share, share with us, our, our planning folks to share with us, how many pages of rules and regulations were reduced as a result of this, approximately?
Fifty-four from this one, and we're at 205, I believe, to the per four pages.
Someone else.
Well, that's 54 pages for this one and 205 for additional ones. Thank you.
And our goal, getting down to a wallet-sized version of the county code. No, not really.
Appreciate that work.
All right, with that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Motion carries unanimously. And with that, we're on to the consent agenda. I'll ask the Clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, today's consent agenda. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, approval of the Housing and Community Development 2018 Action Plan. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Molalla for transfer of road authority of South Low Road. Approval of a board order acknowledging and accepting right-of-way and simultaneous vacation of Audi Street, County Road Number 2. County Road Number Two, Four-Four-Seven. Approval of a contract with Eagle Eisner for the Borland Road paving package. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under Technology Services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Metro Area Joint CAD System for fiber connection. And approval of a service-level agreement with Clear Creek Mutual Telephone Company for two dark fiber connections. Under Business and Community Services, approval of Clackamas County's 2018 10-year Forest Management Plan. Under Development Agency, approval of an outfall easement related to storm water facilities located on Development Agency property. And approval of amendment number one to the disposition agreement with Oregon Beverage Recycling Cooperative. Under Water Environment Services, approval of a service connection mortgage in the North Clackamas Service Area for Clackamas County Service District Number One. Approval of amendment number one to the agreement between Clackamas County Service District Number One and Tribeca Transport for on-call services of the management of Class B bio solids and raw sludge. Approval of amendment number one to the agreement between Water Environment Services and Tribeca Transport for on-call services for the management of Class B bio solids and raw sludge. And approval to apply for grants within with the Oregon Energy Trust and Portland General Electric for renewal energy infrastructure construction. And that concludes today's consent agenda.
Thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion?
I just have one question. I just want to make sure I got this that had some revisions in it that we're adopting today, and I have little stickies, but I don't know what was interlineated. And I just want to make sure that the concerns that were raised were all incorporated, and I got a good note from community members that said they felt good about it. But I can't see what was taken out and put in, so I'm just confirming with our administrator today.
I can confirm that those concerns have been addressed in the plan.
Thank you so much. It's good partnership.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. With that, we're on to county administrator updates.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got several items to share with you. First, our Behavioral Health Division of our Health, Housing, and Human Services Department has teamed up with a nonprofit known as Lines for Life to create a new free service. It's called the Senior Loneliness Line. This is a twenty-four-hour, seven-day-a-week crisis line that offers help to older adults in our communities who may feel isolated or lonely. Calls are confidential, and callers are provided support and the ability to get connected to various and important resources that may be of assistance. Lines for Life is a nonprofit that's dedicated to preventing substance abuse and suicide, and I just wanted to thank them for their partnership with us, as well as thank our behavioral health staff for the good job they've been doing in putting this venture together. The public can find out more at their website, which is www.seniorlonelinessline.org. And that's all one word without spaces between the words, seniorlonelinessline.org. So, thank you for that. Next, locally, our North Clackamas Urban Watersheds Council has recently honored Mr. John Nagy, who is our staff person in our Water Environment Services Department, as one of its founding members. And so, Mr. Nagy, who is an erosion controller for Wes, received this award for his many years of service working with the council. And of course, this council works with us in partnership to seek to improve water quality and protection, preservation, restoration of habitat here in Clackamas County. And I just wanted to extend congratulations to John for that. And then, lastly, our Commissioner's office did receive a call earlier this week from a woman by the name of Lorraine, and she lives in an assisted living facility here in the county. She had just finished reading the latest and greatest version of CLACCO Quarterly. That's our quarterly publication that Public and Governmental Affairs creates and then sends out to virtually every household in the county. But Lorraine wanted to let us know that she enjoyed reading virtually every page. I'm sure Crupp's Corner was a... But she did especially mention the section regarding recycling, saying that she's been an avid recycler her whole life, and that the section was full of lots of great information. She also relayed that she's been wanting to call us for some time now to let us know how wonderful this paper is and the value that it brings to her. So, the CLACCO Quarterly, of course, has hit the mailboxes this week, and I wanted to extend a thanks to the great job our Public and Governmental Affairs staff do to produce it every quarter. Thanks very much.
Great. Thank you. First up is Commissioner Fisher.
Yeah, I also enjoyed reading my CLACCO newsletter, and especially when China isn't taking our recycling, having the pictures that are in the newsletter when you open it up of everything that you can put in your recycle bin and to stop wishful recycling. Do not put it in the recycling bin if it does not belong there because we are not sending mixed recycling to China. They are not accepting it. So, that's my public services announcement. And I just wanted to say a few words, Commissioner Humberston, and I had the honor of going back to Washington, D.C., and meeting with our congressional delegation. And really wonderful work by our staff and our lobbyists back in D.C. in connecting us and talking about important issues, and just continuing to build the relationship, which is so important to make sure that we promote what we need for the residents of Clackamas County. Some of the things that we talked about, which isn't a surprise to any of us, but we continue to express the need for I-205. We talk about the importance of promoting the transfer of the locks to a designee so that those locks can hopefully be opened. A lot of work with the Army Corps of Engineers and with all of our delegation, making sure we're on the same page. And I'm sure Commissioner Humberston will share in his comments about cross-laminated timber and how we have incredible opportunity there. Housing, homelessness, affordable housing. We had wonderful dialogue with HUD and incredible expertise there, talking about the importance of models around the nation, about what works, about housing first as a model that really helps transition people from the streets to more permanent shelter. And of course, on the minds of our delegation is the opioid crisis. Senator Ron Wyden has tasked us with getting stories and information to him as he promotes solutions at the federal level. It just feels good to be connected and working collaboratively and together on things of national importance that are important to us just right here at home.
Great. Thank you very much. Commissioner Humberston?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To follow up on our D.C. trip, as Commissioner Fisher acknowledged, we did, of course, discuss CLT, but we also discussed and thanked our congressional contingent for their work on getting us funding for firefighting that is directly related to the firefighting and not taken away from the Forest Services budgets for planning and doing fire suppression. It's called fire borrowing, and it helps to reduce that fire borrowing in our fire situation. And we were able to tie the CLT concept into some ideas about fuel reduction efforts close to where homes and the forest come together, which would also reduce not only the fire hazards, but reduce the cost to insurance companies when they have to rebuild homes to get burnt in these fires. And to a person, our contingent is very supportive of our initiative on CLT. The other issue I had an opportunity to bring up briefly was our initiative to get internet service, high-speed internet service, I should say, to every home and business in Clackamas County. And that process is moving forward, and we're finding a number of other public agencies reaching out to us to contract with us for those services also. And in that vein, we're saving literally hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayer money. As was already mentioned today, we, three of us did attend the MACG Safe Overnight Shelter Conference, put on at one of the local churches here in Oregon City. The H3S boards meeting was very interesting. I think, what is it, seven or eight of the volunteer boards, at least, were represented in that, covering everything from housing to drug use prevention and related subjects, and sort of preparing us for the upcoming long session and some of the issues we might want to be focused on during the long session of our state legislature. We also attended the VFW Loyalty Day, Flag Day, where we not only celebrated the American flag in the service of our veterans, but also participated, or at least watched the appropriate disposal of old U.S. flags and honoring them for their service. And finally, yesterday, we attended the Parrot Creek Luncheon, which is a major fundraiser for Parrot Creek, Boys Ranch, and appears that they raised quite a bit of money. I don't know what their final total was, however. Thank you.
Dog?
Oh, yes. It's here somewhere. I know where it is. I was using it for notes. Thank you. The dog of the week, this is Baxter, a one-hundred-and-three-pound Mastiff Boxer mix. Baxter enjoys being around people and getting petted. He would love a fenced yard during nice days, but that spot beside you while you sit on the couch is great, too. He is a little overweight, so a good diet and exercise are important to him. He would be a great companion as you walk or jog in your neighborhood. His little tail nub is just wagging at the thought of finding a perfect home. Please come visit Baxter today. He might just be your new best friend. For more information about Baxter and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services at (503) 655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs.
Thank you. Commissioner Savas?
Yes, well, I think most folks know about the community of Boring, Oregon. And what I learned several years ago after campaigning out there is that it was actually named after the Boring family. And I just learned here today, this morning, that Bob Boring passed away this last weekend. And so, I just want to just give my condolences to the family. I thought Bob was always great. He was a very warm individual, very involved in his community, went to many CPO meetings where he was in attendance. So, he cared about his community, and he was involved. So, I just want to just, again, recognize Bob for all of his good work, and again, my condolences to the family. Monday, well, we talked about Saturday when Ms. Sahari was here, talking about what they did at Father's Heart. But Monday, we had a meeting, and Jim's going to talk about that a little bit, with some of our committees and groups. And what's come up really on Saturday in past and present is really our seniors, our kids, those that are struggling, that are houseless, homeless. And, you know, kids especially, really, you know, they're really important. This is part of the reason why I really ran in the first place was, you know, several years ago, was really the future of the county, the future for future generations. And on last Thursday, Chair Bernard and myself had the opportunity, again, it was Bring Your Kids to Work Day. And we sat here in this room in the afternoon with a bunch of kids, and we took questions, which was the first time we did that. Let me tell you, we got to do that again. And that was a blast. I had a lot of fun. And not that, a very similar experience with the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, when we have the opportunity to speak to them and take questions. And I think even Commissioner Fisher reflected here about a week or so ago on her, how much she enjoyed that as well. But it really brings the point home that when we recognize whether they're senior citizens we heard about on Monday that are struggling, or whether it's our kids, especially those that are homeless, is that it's very complicated, more complicated about the care and custody of children that are homeless because the schools have to grapple with that. And there are really strict rules. So, whenever a child is placed in the care and custody of someone, it is usually often, I know that Commissioner Fisher's got some background in this as an attorney for family practice. It's not easy. It's not as easy as opening a door and say, "Here, you know, let this child stay." I mean, it's important, very critical that people are responsible for the care and custody, especially if they're not actually the parents. So, I want to appreciate my Father's Heart group as well, taking this up about a year ago, about how to help, really, a whole conversation in the afternoon, how to help kids that are actually homeless. And we discovered then the complexities of that. So, I really enjoyed Monday that discussion and got a lot of good feedback about our efforts to sit down with the Board of Commissioners with all these different groups and talking about all these things we're trying to grapple with with regards to mental health issues and physical health and all the things that we did. And so, and lastly, said it earlier, get out and vote. I mean, there's some real important positions. I do want to, for those in the urban area, we have four people vying, I guess one technically pulled out, but they're still on the ballot. We have three people vying for the Metro Council seat. And Clackamas County is really the Clackamas County position, and we have a unique opportunity to appoint someone. So, I'm just ask people to do their homework, do their research, and get involved in the election, and please vote. Go all the way down the ballot. Vote on everything you can and everything you're knowledgeable about. That'd be appreciated. We have twelve more days left, I believe. Twelve more days.
You would know.
I would know. I'm not counting. It's only twelve. But, yeah, I guess I just want to just appreciate the fact that we had the opportunity on Monday to sit down with these groups. And on Saturday, it really is a very trying time, and we know that a lot of families are struggling.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas. Commissioner Schrader?
Go fight, win, Commissioner Savas. We're all rooting for you here this morning. It's one of the best boards I've ever had an opportunity to work with. So, I'm glad you're here and glad you're coming back. On April 27th, I had the opportunity to attend the Clackamas Workforce Partnership Board Retreat at Stoller Vineyards, traveled all the way out to Dayton, and that's where we had a retreat for the day. I was joined by Rich Swift and Cindy Hagan from Business and Community Services. And this was a strategy retreat where we looked at our long-term workforce goals and how we're going to be working with barrier workers, how displaced workers, and our youth in the area of Clackamas. And to that end, I just had a morning meeting with Bridget Daisy, the Executive Director of Clackamas Workforce Partnership, where we did a debriefing on this issue. And she gave me a few things I need to follow up with, with our excellent administrator, Don Crupp, and Mr. Madcor. So, I'll be trying to set up some time with you to talk about workforce issues and see how we can include their work under the work that we're doing with helping people get the homes they need and deserve. Because once they get housed, we also need to make sure they get jobs. So, that was a really good retreat. Thank you for Ken, for inviting me to the Cross-Laminated Timber Investment Strategy. Very cool, and it sounds like you're actually starting to set up funding because of your networking, which is just great to see.
Patience and persistence.
Patience and persistence. Exactly. And we also had an opportunity to go to the, I think there were a number of us there. I think Sonia, you were there, Ken was there, all you were there. But we went to the VFW Loyalty Day, and this is where they retire flags for the years. And so, our local VFW here in Oregon City actually has a drop-off for used and discarded flags, where they give it an honorable ceremony in order to dispose of the flags in a way that honors our country and honors the symbol of our country. So, that was kind of cool. We had a second meeting of the Willamette Falls Locks Commission, and this is the governor-appointed group that's looking at how we are going to continue our work with the Army Corps of Engineers to what we say, unlock the locks. We looked at it from a transportation perspective and economic development and tourism perspective. I had the pleasure of working with Danielle Cowan, who was there at the meeting as well yesterday, discussing a lot of those issues and adding our voice as a county to this undertaking. is participation in membership benefits reports from the National Association of Counties. And indeed, we are a very, very well-respected participant in the National Association, and basically, they gave us just a quick overview, federal funds lobbied for by NACO, payment in lieu of taxes, community development block grants, the HUD Home Program, secure rural schools, and they have listed all the dollars that we have, that we have been able to get as a county, based on working at the national level to lobby our federal government to make sure that counties matter and that we need the revenue streams to operate programs for our folks. Actually, also mentions that we've saved over $98,000 by using U.S. communities, and we've also saved residents by participating in the National Association's Prescription Discount Card Program, over $7,000. So, and then, they've also listed a number of awards we've gotten since 1915. It's been quite a few. And all of us have a role on the boards and committee participation. So, each of us, as we go out to these programs, actually participates at a national level doing these works. I know Sonia, you're on the Human Services and Education Steering Committee. Paul, you're on the Transportation Steering Committee, and people are going out there to help influence what we do nationally. So, colleagues, I will get this detailed copy to you, because it's very important that the public know that when we go out to D.C. and when we participate nationally, it actually influences and helps augment our tax dollars and the programs that we run here in Clackamas County, and it helps us be successful. Okay, with that, I'm going to go into the Word of the Week. And I think Mary's going to pull up. "Dalliance: A Lighthearted Undertaking Carefree Spending of Time." Did you know, a dalliance is an inconsequential event? The word "often" refers to an amorous flirtation or distraction. But we always put this in the context of libraries. So, the children's dalliance was apparent to the librarian. She watched as they dashed back and forth to many different shelves instead of reading the books they had already placed on the table. I want to thank Kevin for this. He always puts it in a library context, and I think he has a lot of fun with this. I think he does. Okay, arts and cultures activities in the county? I'm just going to start with some things that aren't directly listed, but remember that Lakewood, Lakewood Theater for the Arts Sister Act is playing from April 27 through June 10. That is in Lake Oswego. They are a very professional group. Clackamas Repertory Theater is going to be performing Sense and Sensibility from June 28 to July 22 at Clackamas Community College. Also, Clackamas Repertory Theater on June 16 at the college, 10:30 a.m. in the Osterman Theater. They're going to be doing a program called Wing It, which is an interactive program for children aged two to 10 years. So, if you've got kids two to 10 years and you want to give them a fun morning, bring them to Wing It, courtesy of Clackamas Repertory Theater. And I just want to ask Commissioner Fisher, what is, what is Kirk working on right now? What is he doing?
Yeah, St. Town stage is in the, is in the second week of Evita, then, tonight, tonight through Sunday.
Okay.
And they have, play for two more weekends.
All righty, so go to see Evita. It's a wonderful play, and your husband is a great director.
He is.
And facilitator of the theater. Okay, First Friday Happenings for Friday, May 4. Okay, Arts Council of Lake Oswego, First Friday Opening of the Capturing Place Photography Exhibit, Museum and Art Space in Lake O, 5 to 7 p.m. Downtown Milwaukee, a Celebration of Art, Music, Food and Community, 5 to 9 p.m. The Milwaukee Poetry Series at St. John the Evangelist Church in Milwaukee, from 6 to 7:30 p.m. And the Spiral Gallery, this is M.E. Multifaceted Eclectic. First Friday opening for this is M.E. Multifacetic Eclectic with artist Janelle Powell, 6 to 9 p.m. The Spiral Gallery in Estacada. And finally, the Westland Historical Society presents Voices from the Past, Westland's Walk of Fame. It's a short guided tour, listening to the voices of people from Westland. Actors are going to portray the founders, workers, and characters that made Westland the city it is today. There'll be guided tours every 10 minutes. That's happening Saturday, May 5, from 6 to 8:30 p.m. at the McLean House in Westland. So, lots of fun things to do, I think. I was going to ask, I was going to say Mayor Bernard, Commissioner Bernard. So, isn't the Milwaukee Farmer's Market opening on Sunday? Do you know?
I was going to announce that. Yes, I know.
Okay, good.
(laughter) Lead you to the punch, buddy. There you go.
Yeah, I continue to serve as the president of the nonprofit that runs the farmer's market on Sunday, and that is our opening. So, and there's probably others around the county, perhaps out in our own parking lot here at the county, so could, could be this weekend. So, be sure and go to your farmer's markets. Lot of small businesses start at farmer's markets and open brick and mortar buildings, and also programs for youth and services for the hungry sometimes. So, be sure and do that. One of the things we did, which was, from what I understand, the first time ever, is we met with the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Round, and board to board. It was a great opportunity. We have some great pictures. The falls in Oregon City and various parts around the county are historically their lands. We do actually have Warm Springs Reservation, actually comes into Clackamas County in a couple of tiny spots, but they are not part of that federation. They're the Warm Springs Federation, which I didn't know until after they left. But it was a great meeting. We have, all of us, of course, have opioid problems, we have mental health. I'm not, we, we don't all have opiate problems, I should restate that.
(laughter) I was going to say, speak for yourself, Jim.
We're trying, we're trying to address the opioid crisis, housing crisis.
Yep.
Mental health crisis, and many other things. So, we talked about some of those issues and absolutely intend on having another one, more meetings with them. Next time, we're going down to the Grand Round to visit that area, not the casino, but we may have lunch in the casino. So, I look forward to that. You know, recently, a ser, we did a survey, and something, there was a bit of a change in the survey, and that change was that homelessness and housing has moved to the top of the list. Public safety has been there for a long time. Of course, homelessness and housing does have an impact on public safety. So, there is great concern, and the county is stepping up and trying to address those issues. Also, didn't go to a meeting, so now I'm the vice president of Emergency Management Group, which includes all counties, I shouldn't say all counties, Clark County, Clackamas, Washington, and Monoma County, and various emergency management groups. And you don't hear much about us, but we're, we're actually, our group funded the earthquake survey that was recently presented. And so, we're working to discuss a legislative concept about debris management should a major earthquake occur. Right now, it's not legal for anyone to store the debris outside the metro boundary. And obviously, in Monoma County, a lot of the metro boundary is full of houses. There are a few sites. So, we're, we need to work with the legislature, find temporary place to put that debris should a major earthquake occur, and we're, we're looking at that. Also, and I, I mentioned this before, but it might be a time to, for you to think about it when you're, you're taking a little time off, is a children's budget. It might be a good idea in this budget process to talk about setting some money aside to do that, 50,000 or 25 this year, 25 next year, for a $50,000 budget, because it's not like we would just get some kids up here and say, spend the money. It's going to take a year for them to maybe become aware of the stuff we do. And I think that little thing we did with the questioning, sitting down with the kids and talking about issues, would be a, a good way to start this. And Commissioner Fisher's working on this, and I think, you know, when you talk about so few people know what we do, there's no better place to start than with the kids. You know, it's like recycling. If you teach recycling at school, they bring it home. We teach good governance, and they will bring it home. And, and teaching them about what those issues of importance are, and giving them, five, five kids, an opportunity to sit with us, like we do with all our other committees, and figure out how to spend that money. This program has been successful across the country. In one, in one state, they get a million dollars. I think it's Philadelphia, a million dollars to budget. And you would think they're going to do skateboard parks and stuff like that, but that's not what they ended up doing. They do feeding the hungry and homelessness and all those things that we think about. But it's a great, it's a great opportunity to reach out to youth. And Les is not here, and Nancy and Karen, you may have the record if he keeps not showing up, and we'll have to name those seats after you. But with that, enjoy the sunshine, and want to remind folks that next week, our meeting on May 10, so don't show up in the morning, is in the evening at 6 p.m. And I am heading off to Washington. Ken will be chairing the meeting, so make it challenging for him.
Oh gee, thanks.
Oh, no.
But with that, have a great weekend, and thank you very much for attending. We're adjourned.[1767.53]